All right. Good evening and welcome to the July tenth, two thousand nineteen Scarborough zoning Board of Appeals. If you could all join in rise and give the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning, the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call, please. Karen Chu.
Here.
Melinda Torrance.
Here.
David Bork.
Here.
James Hebert.
Here.
Rudy Kieran.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to the July tenth, two thousand nineteen Scarborough zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into an executive session, the public has the right to hear everything that is being said and to view all the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairperson, me, if you are unable to hear or to see the proceedings. The board will work from a prepared agenda and will take up tonight's items in the following order. First, we will approve the minutes from the last couple of meetings and approve the draft written decisions for two other decisions. And we have two, we have three appeals tonight, then. We have appeal number two six six one, which is a special exception appeal. And appeal number two six six two, a variance appeal. And then appeal number two six six three, which is a practical difference, difficulty variance appeal. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate the compliance with each of the criteria or provisions of the applicable appeal. The board will ask questions as necessary to understand the nature of the appeal as fully as possible. When all testimony has been heard, the chairman will close the record and the board will adopt finding of facts for each parent of the appeal and devote to determine if the applicant has met the burden of proof necessary to meet the criteria. It is important to note that if any of the appeal or special exception criteria has not been met, the board must deny the appeal or the application. In many cases, the appellant or the landowner may have a personal problem which prompted the request for the variance. Please understand, this is not legally relevant to the appeal, no matter how sympathetic the board may be to the applicant's situation. After the board votes on the merits of each criteria, a motion may be made to approve the appeal. And if there is a second, discussion will follow. The board will then state conclusions of law based on finding of facts to support a decision on the motion. A general vote will then take place on the appeal. If the majority of the voting members present, present vote on, in the affirmative, the appeal is approved. If the majority of the voting members vote in the negative, the appeal is denied. The board's decision stands as of the date of the vote was taken, regardless of the approval of the final written decision. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with superior court, except as otherwise provided by law, within forty-five days of this board's decision. Again, we remind everyone that this is a public proceeding, and you have the right to hear and see what is happening. All persons speaking will be asked to first state their name and address or affiliation. And all board members and interested parties are asked to direct their questions through the chair. Thank you. So first, we're going to approve the minutes from the May eighth, two thousand nineteen zoning board meeting. Did everyone in the board get a chance to review those minutes?
Yes, we did.
Any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the June twelfth, or?
May eighth.
May, May eighth meeting, minutes as, as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor? And are you abstaining?
I'll abstain.
Okay. And then we have the June twelfth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes. Did everyone have any questions or concerns? Comments, motion to approve?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Now, we have the approval of the draft written decision for the appeal that was heard on May eighth, which is the appeal number two six five nine, Lake Alice of two forty-three Pine Point Road. Did everyone get a chance to review the, that decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions or concerns or comments? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve special exception permit approval, uh, two six five nine, as written.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Sorry. And then we have the written decision from the appeal of June twelfth, which is appeal number two six six zero of Driftwood at Higgins, which was eight Ocean Ave. Did everyone get a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions, concerns, or comments?
Well, I'll move to appeal, I'll move to approve the written decision on appeal number two six six zero as presented.
My second.
All in favor? Melinda stands. Great, thank you. So we will move into the first appeal, which is appeal number two six six one, six six one, which is a special exception appeal by Highland Ave Greenhouse, located at two oh nine Highland Ave, assessors map far seven nine, lot five. I'm first going to ask Mr. Longstaff to give us some background for this application.
Sure, Ms. Chair. Appeal two six six one is a special exception appeal. The applicant is seeking approval to erect another greenhouse on their commercial agricultural use activity at that address. This greenhouse is, as I understand it, is to be dedicated to hosting events which are accessory to the commercial agricultural use, which must be approved by special exception in the R two district. The parcel's nine point one acres. The events included in the applicant's narrative are classes, workshops, fundraisers, and other functions. This additional accessory use is not subject to site plan review per the exemption in chapter four oh five B, section two T four. So the board, it's really, this is the only review that's going to happen for this proposal other than a building permit and the required inspections.
Okay. Great, thank you. Can we ask the applicant or their representative? Please come up.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
Good, please.
I'm Christine Visconti, and I live at one twenty-five Highland Ave. Our company is one oh nine Highland Ave.
And I'm Caitlin LaCassio King.
Thank you. Would you like to give us some information about your application tonight?
Um, sure, what, where should I start? What would you like to know?
I don't know if you want to tell us anything about what you're looking for tonight specifically, or it looks like you had a nice introduction letter here.
Sure, okay. Do you want me to read that so everyone, I don't know what they've seen or what they haven't seen, but I can kind of summarize what we?
If you just want to summarize it, that's fine.
So, we are here to get approval for a new dedicated space to host our workshops and events in. Currently, we're hosting a bunch of different types of workshops and classes and fundraising events and whatnot, and we're using it, we're currently using a space that is used for something else. So we're emptying that space out and then putting it all back together every time we do this. One of our greenhouses existing, which is the longest one, um, on the, kind of more towards the left there. We took part of that down because it was too long for retail, and we are relocating it out into the area marked proposed. And that is where we want to have a dedicated space to hold the events that we're already doing and possibly increasing that as an offering to what we're doing.
Okay, great. So what we'll do now is I'm going to go through the qual, the special exception qualifications here. And I'll just, if you want, you can just read any answers that you provided.
Okay.
Or elaborate as you please. Um, so the standard for special exceptions is, first, we have A. The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful, unhealthful conditions by reasons of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Sure, so, um, per the instruction of James Butler on March seventh of this year, the farm consulted with a site evaluator as to determine the best way to handle wastewater for the proposed greenhouse with seasonal use in an event space. Accordingly, Albert Frick Associates conducted a site evaluation and determined, based on their experiences and dealings in these matters, that portable bathroom trailer should be the best option. I have an email from Matthew Logan stating why he thought that was the best option. And it explains the overview and rationale behind his recommendation. And there will be no change in air or water emissions.
So tell me more about the portable bathroom trailers.
Sure.
Is that something that you have for the whole season and they service, or does it come and go?
No, it comes and goes only as events are being held. So it would be there for a day. Say if we had a fundraiser, we would bring one in just to service the area a little bit better. We currently use porta potties for our customers, which are located further away from this area. So we decided a portable bathroom trailer would probably be a better fit.
Right.
I have a question, Madam Chair. With regard to size, what's the anticipated occupancy? How many stalls, I guess, will be in this bathroom trailer? Will be sort of a single-use trailer, or will it be a gag bathroom with multiple stalls in it?
It completely?
Full sexes, singles?
It completely depends on the event that is happening. If we have an event for thirty people, then we'd probably just get another porta potty. If we have an event for a hundred people, we would just go by recommended use for, like, try on hall, for example, rent them out. So whatever they would recommend for best use would be what, what, what would they do? So it wouldn't necessarily be the same trailer over and over, because we just wanted to get what we're working with.
So it'd be based on, it'd be based on size of the event?
Yes.
That you're going to have there?
Yeah.
Okay, and that cost of the trailer probably be passed on to them through their fee of renting the space?
Exactly, or if it's like what we're doing now, where we have a ticket price for our workshops, it would just be worked into that cost of doing the business.
If you don't mind, just a follow-up question, just to confirm. You've shared that there are existing porta potties elsewhere on site that are available for use?
Yes.
And this would just be for any additional occupancy that would be required on site?
Yes, more easier to access.
Sure.
Okay, I guess, so I was thinking it would sit there for like a week. And what you're saying is like, it would be like, we have an event, it comes and goes, okay.
I think the best way to think of it is like a rental you'd have for any other event.
Right.
You rent tables for an event. It's the same idea, it's just much larger and more practical.
Right. I think for me, this is what you're doing in alternative, actually putting in a whole, like, septic system and stuff. So I'm thinking, oh, this is going to be a permanent sort of thing. What you're saying is that it's going to really just be specifically when the events are happening.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm familiar with these, and they're, they're usually kind of like a trailer that is pulled in.
I've seen that concerts.
Yeah, and, you know, there's usually somewhere between four and six stalls or whatever, you know. They're much more elegant than a porta potty. And, and it would be much more appropriate for a certain event that, you know, but I could see where you would, you would flex that based on what the event was and what, what was called for, for the situation.
Absolutely, a large force behind this is consumer requests. People who attend the classes and workshops, and they want to host events here, and they want them to be a little bit more elevated. Porta potties aren't very elevated.
Not so much.
We do our best. This is purple.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, so B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing unforeseeable traffic in its vicinity.
The existing parking lot, eighty, which consists of eighty-seven nine by eighteen parking spots, is sufficient to continue to supply the needs of the existing use as well as anticipated needs of the proposed use of an event space with an intended use only between the months of June through October. And we don't anticipate any additional pedestrian traffic.
I have a question about that. As I read through your proposal, it, you said that you were doing this to increase traffic or sales, generate more sales?
Yes.
And in doing so, that means you're going to have more cars?
Yes.
Okay. And when do you propose to have these events during the peak season when you're also selling a lot of products, or what?
Sorry, continue.
Well, when are, when are your busiest times of the year? Because I assume your business is somewhat seasonal.
It's very seasonal. Our busiest times of the year are actually April and May.
Right, so when would you be hosting these kind of events?
Uh, mid-June through October.
Okay, so later on, you're saying?
Yes.
Past peak?
Yes.
So it's, so what you're saying then is that you're trying to build sales during what's normally a slower time of the year?
Exactly.
And the, if I read into that, then, you, you do have quite a bit of parking spots right there. Okay, and during, just to further, to follow up on that past peak, during those June through October months, what would be the typical amount of cars that you might see there at peak time? An maximum amount?
Six.
Six, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so your business is extremely seasonal.
Very.
All right, so you're just, you're just trying to expand your, your season longer by off, by hosting these kinds of events?
Exactly. We, we do about half of our revenues in April and May.
Right, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, it's not really going to affect ingress and egress or parking, any of those things? Because it's during non-peak, strictly non-peak?
Yes.
Times, okay.
Yeah. I would also dovetail that, that there's peak seasons and months, and there's also peak parts of the day.
Right.
Example, now?
Absolutely.
Classes and workshops are typically held at like four P M.
Later on in the evening?
Right, or late after lunch, or late afternoon.
Yeah.
For immediately after work for classes. So again, when all the staff is needed to help customers in the greenhouses, you know, peak between like ten and two or whatever, the classes are being held at different times.
So you currently have eighty-seven spots right now?
Yeah.
And I mean, I guess I'm trying to see where exactly they are. And are you adding any more parking?
No. So the road where it says parking, eighty-seven, it's dirt, so they're not lined. I do line them during busy times, but it's with, you know, where's off, obviously.
Right.
But they are on both sides of that section where you see cars now in that picture. But it actually continues down the side of those greenhouses as well, to where the arrow ends. And then I also have eleven spaces up there, which are kind of additional.
And so, with this new building, what sort of capacity? I mean, because you're saying eighty-seven spots, but when you have, you know, vendors and porta potties and things like that, and people coming and parking, is there any sort of overflow? Or would they end up in the street, do you think?
From experience, we haven't really ended up with much for street parking. Our Pumpkin Festival fundraiser is a very large event, and we have part, people parked all over the field and down the side of our road, which is accessible with eighteen-wheelers, so it's very wide.
Right.
And then in front of our fence, which has a very big setback from the road. That's actually where parking used to be a long time ago.
Right.
So, yeah, we've got a lot of overflow space. Most of the field is also just kind of hanging out, so.
And I've, I've actually never been there, so I apologize. Is it, is it like a horseshoe loop? You come in, you come out, come in one way, come out the other?
Yeah, during busy times, like during Pumpkin Festival, for example, we do have people come in from where my north marker is. They come in, go through, they park, and then they can continue out and around the right side of the greenhouses and out that way.
Right.
So it does kind of make for easy use.
Yeah, I'm quite familiar, because it's pretty much right in my backyard almost. And you guys have always done a really great job of, of managing parking flow and, and space. Even, even in the middle of, you know, Christmas tree season, when there's a lot of people and there's snow everywhere.
Yes, yeah.
Which is a very different time of year, but, you know, so I, I can't see where you would have any problem. And I also can't imagine where you would not be smart enough to make sure that you were never stacking it up where you had an event going at a peak time for your sales, because that would not be good business practice. So I'm, yeah.
And I'm only one person, and as is she, and it's tough enough to get through that season, isn't it?
Exactly.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, um, in the, to date, what's the largest event that you've had there that's potentially filled that to capacity previously?
The Pumpkin Festival.
The Pumpkin Festival?
Yeah, we've done that seven years, and every year it's grown. This last year was a tricky one because it actually rained on our date. So we ended up doing the original date and our rain date, but the year before it was gorgeous weather, and we figured we had about nine hundred people there.
Nice.
It was, yeah, it was great.
Now, is that?
Raised a lot of money.
No, sure, and that's wonderful. With regard to parking, that, you were still fine with eighty-seven spots on that side and eleven spots on that side? There was, there wasn't any overflow on the street or anything like that?
Well, like I said, in front of our fence, there's like twenty feet from the fence to the, to the actual pavement. There's a, a, a big kind of shoulder. So sometimes my customers, when there's eighty-seven spots open, park there. So, yeah, if there was overflow, it kind of went in that direction. But during those types of events, which I don't anticipate having more than one, because it's plenty of work, you know, we have two parking attendants, and that type of event also is a, more of an open house style, where people are kind of recalling, so not all nine hundred people were there all at the same time. So.
Great, okay. So the, the existing parking spots, that you're able to fill that with no problem, and they cycle through without any traffic issues?
Yeah, yeah, we've been really happy, actually, with how it's gone.
Great. Okay.
We like to keep people moving smoothly. It's all for the customer service.
Right, they're not going to stop if you're, if it's not easy.
Right, yeah.
Madam Chair, just a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Would you mind, please, clarifying a statement you shared earlier about the longest building on the site? That it was being reduced and relocated to the proposed area?
Yes, so, um, it's the best way to like point to it. The, the longest greenhouse, which was kind of grayish-white, yes, that one?
Okay.
Is, was a hundred and sixty feet long in a retail sense. It was far too long, people never made it to the end before they turned around. And it got very hot, because the air doesn't circle, cycle through as well. So we decided to take part of that down, because it also opened up to the retail space to the left. And so we just wanted to relocate that section that we took down and put it out in that field.
Okay. So it may be fair to say that there's not a great increase in the confined space or area as you're reducing one to relocate it upstairs?
Exactly.
And the follow-up question about the busy times of day, classes in the afternoon after work, how late would it possibly go into the evening?
Right now, our latest class is running until version nine.
Thank you.
I have a general question, not related to, not directly related to parking issues. Do you anticipate ever doing food or beverage service on site?
From a catering standpoint?
Well, whether it be yourselves doing it or bringing in food trucks or an outside caterer?
You actually already do have food service on site, don't you?
We do have food service on site, yeah, already. Actually, that was the last time I was up before it was more.
Really good food service, too, by the way.
So what you're saying is, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. You're not doing it yourselves, you're bringing out outs, you know, outside people to, to do it? Okay, so there's no preparation done outside?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than the existing uses in the neighborhood?
Um, let's see, the proposed use will not be substantially different from existing use and does not anticipate a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. The existing use currently has regular functions and gatherings of people and retail customers. The proposed use would only add additional people on limited dates during a set season of the year.
Okay. So, right now, I understand that you're doing educational things. Do you hold events? And tell me, and then do you serve any sort of like alcohol at any of the events that you're currently having right now? Do you guys have like a wine tasting or painting thing or something?
There is a wine tasting, yep, which is done through our distributor. We don't serve that. But, um, yeah, so what was the other part of the question?
So I'm, I'm wondering what the difference is in what type of new uses you're going to be using, um, because you are in a residential neighborhood, so it's important to see what sort of changes from what you've been doing before and what changes you want to do now.
Mm-hmm, so what, the whole point of the special exceptions is something?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, because we've been doing, um, falls under the agretainment that we're already, able to do given the agriculture section that we're, we fall under. Um, really what we're here for is because we've been approached by many customers who want to have their baby shower here or have a reception here or have a corporate event, you know, uh, it kind of runs the gamut of different, um, ideas. Also, I mean, with the Tri-Fur Care is coming up, I've been approached by many, uh, women who wanted to have their Tri-Fur Care fundraiser there. You know, some small, related to classes that we're already doing, some, you know, like a, anything, I mean, anything you can do with a fundraiser, really. Um, so that is why I work here because it kind of falls outside of our agretainment category. It kind of, it falls into maybe larger groups of people, you know, somebody's baby shower doesn't really have anything to do with my-
It's more social.
-agriculture business.
Yeah.
It's more of a, a social aspect, so.
So if I may, uh, for, just a follow-up question on that. If you're using an outside caterer or a food truck to do those kinds of things, right, you know, some of them may be serving alcoholic beverages, but they're, they're solely under control of that, not you?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you have any live, uh, music or entertainment?
It falls under one of the other qualifications. We'll get, we'll get to-
Thank you.
-music and noise and all that.
Cool.
I don't know if you have any questions related to this one here? Any other board members?
No. Good, move on.
Um, D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supply.
Uh, the proposed use will result only in a minor grade change, uh, in the immediate vicinity of the structure, which will not result in increased erosion. The proposed use is anticipated to result in a minor decrease in erosion as the greenhouse will reduce the amount of land held for farming use.
So the building's still intact and the plan is to cut it in half and move it? Doesn't really seem like you would be moving much of the earth to do that.
No, and actually, there are poles in the ground. So it's taking one pole out and bring one pole in.
Yep.
Um, so we're actually leveling just a, a little bit of the land.
Yep.
Um, which obviously, when it's more level, it's not running off. Um, but, um, it'll also reduce the space that we would have otherwise be plowing, tilling for farming, which unfortunately, in its practices, results in more erosion.
Okay. E, the proposed use will be compatible, compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Uh, the proposed use will result in one additional and aesthetically similar greenhouse on the existing working farm with intended use as an event space only between the months of June and October. The proposed use will be located adjacent to the existing parking lot and across from existing greenhouses, um, which I think Ben referenced that matter.
All right, so this gets to the question of, I believe, of alcoholic beverages and live music.
Okay.
Okay, so we've al, you've already answered the question regarding alcoholic beverages. For live music, would that be a possibility for some of the events like showers or weddings, things like that?
That's under I's.
Would you have a band in it, for example? Yeah, let's say the, uh, the, the, the family putting on the event, you know, they want to have live music.
You'd like a band?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they're going to bring a band in, they're going to hire a band, bring them in. Okay, would, would that be acoustic or amplified or both?
I think whenever the space-
Well-
I'd like, I'd like to actually hold this till we get to actually-
Yeah.
...the qualification that talks about noise.
Maybe I'm not saying that yet.
So let's wait till we actually get to I to talk about that one.
Oh, that's frigging, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I have a question.
Yeah.
With regard to the sedimentation erosion, um, you'll have, uh, utilities put out to the new building, electricity?
Yep.
Um, any plumbing, water sewer? A sewer probably not because you have the bathroom trailer.
Right.
Um, but would, like a sink for running water, something like that, or?
Um, we will probably have a sink for running water just for, you know, hand washing use or kind of whatever.
Okay.
That you need running water for, yeah.
Cool, okay.
Any other questions?
Just one general question.
Mm-hmm.
Chair. Um, general, you shared earlier that larger vehicles are able to traverse the site fairly easily, um, and it's a horseshoe shape. Have in the past experienced, has been aware up around a while. Uh, any issues with fire trucks accessing the site? Has there ever been a time that's happened?
No.
Okay.
No. I mean, we've had fire trucks onsite for Pumpkin Festival, but no issue with them getting around.
Thank you.
Okay. F, if located in the shoreline zone, as depicted on the town of Scarborough's official shoreline zoning map, the proposed use will comply with all the requirements of the town of Scarborough's shoreline zoning ordinance.
Uh, the existing and proposed uses are not in shoreline zones.
G, the applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use.
The applicant, you weren't the property.
And it looks like you provided our deed as well here?
Yep.
H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section.
Yes, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. The proposed use will be funded through a business line of credit through a vast savings institution as well as personally financed by the owners.
I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
Um, the proposed use will thoroughly comply with the Good Neighbor Ordinance, in particular with the generation of noise and hours of operation, just as the existing farm has and will continue to do.
So when you currently have the events that you're having now, do they, how late do they typically go?
Um, they vary, but anywhere from seven to nine.
Seven to nine?
Yep.
Okay. Do you see any changes in that? I mean, you know, I, I see other farms doing events and doing weddings and things like that and going later. Do you think that with this new venue and things like that, that you'll be having events that will be going later?
Never say never, um, but our goal is to keep it to nine.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, with regard, um, just with, with regard to noise and proximity of other homes in the neighborhood, um, I think it's fairway lane or something like that that's right behind you folks?
Yeah, fairway drive.
Yeah, fairway drive.
Have it on that map.
Um, the, uh, with the idea of, um, if there were a condition put on, say that many amplified music or amplified entertainment had to be shut off by nine o'clock P.M., would that be something that you guys would be, uh, comfortable adhering to?
Yeah.
Admissible to? Okay. Yeah, because like, from my perspective, um, and also as, as a musician, the, uh, going to, uh, events and weddings and things like that when they can last until nine, ten, eleven, midnight or something like that, because you're in such a densely packed area, um, then that's great that you're able to be, uh, you're willing to do that. So that might be a restriction that we would put on a condition rather, that any kind of activity would have to cease by nine o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, I have one, I mean, our neighbors have been our neighbors for a very long time.
Sure.
And, you know, we do our best to be good neighbors. I know it's tricky sometimes with trucks backing in and, you know, us going about business as usual, but, you know, we try and be really conscious of what we're doing, when we're doing, what we have to do, you know? So I want to continue to live happily alongside our neighbors, uh, because-
Awesome.
-I live right next to the farm as well, so it's, you know, it's, it's my home, too, so.
I think an additional color commentary as well, we, um-
I'm sorry?
As additional color commentary to this, we, we did have a special consult on this matter. I'm, I'm fairly new working at the farm. I happen to be married to a Portland police lieutenant who works ten P.M. to eight A.M. So he's experienced with noise calls and events, so it's, obviously, we're not rock row. I mean, we're wanting to expand baby showers and workshops and fundraisers. I mean, this is the goal to expand. Um, but we had that conversation with him about when you get these phone calls, what do you do? What is the determining level? Something he's done for thirteen years, so we are prepared-
What we don't want is our police to be getting those calls.
Exactly.
Because, I mean, my understanding, and maybe Mr. Longstaff can tell me, I'm not quite sure who actually gets notice of these sort of appeals, you know? So the people who live two houses down have no idea that you want to start having weddings and venues and things like that. And, um, I, I, we, you'd be having live music. Are you going to have like a, like a stage and dance floor and things like that?
There's no stage plans. Um, I mean, we had talked about community events, you know, and just like things to bring the neighborhood together, but no real details about that, whether it would be live music or a barbecue or a, you know, whatever, so.
Right.
Live music, definitely no stage planned.
Mm-hmm. And if there were, if there were music or anything like that, or any kind of activity or entertainment that would be contained to the inside, the interior of the greenhouse?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, which the way it's structured has more of a buffer on the back and the side, um, with our closest neighbors.
Right.
By design.
Sure.
Um, so, yeah, we, we're taking that all into consideration for sure.
Great, thank you.
So the music will be inside the building?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's air-conditioned or is it, you said that the buildings get really hot?
Uh, the way, the old one was built, yes.
Okay.
But the new one will have different types of roof vents and, um, the front wall is retractable.
Right.
Uh, or roll up.
And have you spoken to any of your neighbors about this? I mean, you said you live there, and so are they aware that you want to start doing bigger events that might go later into the night and things like that?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of my neighbors.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I didn't door to door.
Yeah.
Visit everybody because we're-
No, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a residential neighborhood behind you, and I just think, you know, my kids are in bed by seven thirty, and I just would be very upset if, you know, on a, you know, when my kids are tired on a Friday and I'm listening to music past eight, eight-thirty. Your neighbors are pretty close. I don't know if we can look at like a bigger picture of what it's like. I mean, I understand you're there, but, I mean, you say you're not rock row, but I mean, you know, you also are in a, in a residential neighborhood and there's a nice new development behind you with families and kids and you yourself, you know, have a family, and I know you don't want it loud, but you're making the choice to do it, and some of these folks around here might not want something like that. What sort of barrier do you have between you and that development behind you? Is it just a row of trees?
There's quite a row of trees there right now, yeah, makes it our greens and deciduous and undergrowth on all three sides.
I have a question for Brian, our code enforcement officer. Uh, what is the noise standard in this neighborhood? This, excuse me, in this residential zone?
What is the noise standard?
Yes, is there a decibel standard and measured at what point?
If it's, if it's music you're referring to?
Any kind of noise.
I, I don't really answer that question.
Okay.
We have a Good Neighbor Ordinance that spells out noise standards.
Yes, yes, that's probably in there.
I-
I remember having an appeal a few months ago, uh, the, uh, power company wanted to build something and they did include that information in their presentation.
Mm-hmm.
And if I'm mistaken, it was ninety-five decibels.
Well, that was industrial, that was an industrial use.
Yes, but there were neighboring homes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that is measured at the property line.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, there are standards somewhere, okay, that you would have to comply with.
Well, and actually, it says right here in her response that the proposed use will comply with the Good Neighbor Ordinance.
Yeah.
And so I think as long as that's, that's going to, you know, be affirmed, I, I don't-
We reviewed the ordinance, like I said, we informally consulted with someone who gets called to these in Portland on a nightly basis, um, discuss those technical details. And I also think while this is something we are completely cognizant of and are going to follow the rules, I do want to emphasize that that, you know, if you're looking, again, this is an extension of the events we have now, there's, how many of them have music at all? This is not something that is dealt with daily, but we are one hundred percent prepared to deal with it moving forward, but certainly not a focus of the events that we're talking about.
Great. And you're, if, if I understand correctly, too, your intent really is to continue in the character of the type of venue that you have now, which would be much more family-oriented and conducive to home-style kind of life. I, I would assume, is that correct to, to assume that?
Yeah.
I also understood you were saying earlier that, um, you've had several requests for showers and weddings.
Mm-hmm.
That's something you haven't traditionally done in the past, is that correct?
Right.
So you wanted to have the capability of doing those things?
Yeah. We've done a few showers, um, in our smaller space, so.
And again, it's not uncommon for showers to happen in a residential neighborhood as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I would be more concerned with what's the maximum capacity that you expect any of these events to actually achieve? Do you have a, do you have a ceiling or that you really think, feel like you would be putting on it?
I, max is one hundred.
That's, that's quite a few people.
Yeah.
So you're going to advertise the venue as having a max capacity of a hundred and fifty, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess I circled, I mean, I guess, you know, people carpool and they come together. It's a lot more than parking spaces that you currently have. It's a lot more than parking spaces that you currently have.
Actually, when, when, um, businesses are evaluated, such as a restaurant, you know, there are standards as to how many, uh, parking spaces, uh, per capacity of the restaurant. And I think that, Brian, you're gonna have to help me with this one because I'm not sure what the number is. But I'm gonna guess, it's probably somewhere in the area of two and a half people per parking spot. Is, is that close?
Well, we have off-street parking standards in our zoning units, and it depends on the use and the activity.
Right.
Uh, some of it's based on gross leasable space, some of it's, um, based on net leasable space.
Yeah.
Um, residential is based on two, you know, uh, for a two, two-person apartment, uh, like one and a half.
For one bedroom apartments, one and a half spaces. Yeah, but for a big building like this, you know.
We'd have to look at that.
Yeah, and, and that would really be, would that be the fire marshal who would determine that number?
Fire marshal would probably have to review this. They'd also have to get a special amusement apartment. They'd also have to get, um, uh, or they might not have to do it, but their vendors would have to have their licenses.
Yeah, of course.
All of that.
All right, so that's, that's well-covered, you know, by the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in other words, our charge is primarily just figuring out whether it's okay to move this building and do the activity, the initial activity?
Yeah.
With the understanding that there will be other permits that are piggybacked on top of this that are required, is that correct?
Right, with the exception, as I said in the opening comments, they, they don't, they do not have to go through site plan review because they are exempt as a commercial agricultural stat.
Okay.
So, we would, we would be looking at all the others, public safety factors. Um, if there are over a hundred, um, people gathering, they fall under our public assembly, um, ordinance. They have to provide the police department with a, uh, staffing plan and other things. I can't remember all of the, all of the things that are mentioned in there, but that's part of what they'll have to do in order to do business.
And you're aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
They are now.
I don't know those details. Um, so anytime you want to have a wedding of over, or an event of over a hundred people, you have to then register.
And if you want music or things like that, you're gonna have to have additional permits as well, right?
The special amusement apartment would be.
Yeah, so that's a whole other category.
Yes.
All right. I am not familiar with the good neighbor ordinance so much. Maybe I'm not a good neighbor. Um, I don't-
That's what I heard.
You know, um, and so I don't know if there's like a time, you know, like after this time, we don't do things.
It's ten o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights, nine o'clock through, throughout the week for evening.
And so I think that's something that we need to discuss. Um, does the board have any more questions for the applicant at this time?
Uh, no, I'm all set. Those were all my questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to now open this up to the public. I don't know if there's anyone who would like to speak at this time. Can you give us your name and address?
My name's Pat LaFave, and I live at Three Fairway Drive, which directly abuts the property. There's a little scrub in between, and that's about the extent of it. Consequently, as of course you're well aware, I and some of my neighbors received the official notice. Put my glasses back on, so I can- Asking for a special exception for Highland Avenue Greenhouses for an additional greenhouse to be used for seasonal event space. And as I think is made clear, obviously, if already moved the greenhouse, I mean, you know, there's no reason why the greenhouse as a structure would be an issue. But I did wonder exactly what is the special event space? What does that mean? So, I did come over to the, uh, planning board department, and they were very helpful, and I thanked them very much. And I did look at the, uh, appeal very much as you ladies and gentlemen are doing so. And I have a couple of things I would like to say. As I think has been established, the existing principal use is as a commercial agriculture. And it's under the standards that, uh, some questions were raised as far as I was concerned. Under A, I, I didn't hear, but I do believe I copied this correctly, the site to be used ten to fifteen times per year. One of the things was that some of these seemed rather broad. And again, I was very appreciative when I was at the office. The people told me that if I had any other questions, I should, uh, contact Mr. Brian Longstaff, which I did. And I do appreciate, he was most helpful, and I, I thank him also. And he did, and correct me if I misinterpret you, but I think, take the same, I, look that I had there, that is not specific. Probably this would be quite successful if in that period of time it was decided to have twenty, uh, events. I think that would have to be specifically written in as to how many, otherwise it's rather broad in some of the, uh, the language, I might say so. Uh, under C, what you have referred to, which is exactly why we're here this evening, so to speak. It does indeed say, uh, the request was for hostessing, for hosting existing educational and social events and fact, and functions, in parentheses, that says, "necessary to commercial agriculture." And the, again, rather broad but interesting factor, as was just said, was for farm customers and workshop attendees. I think one has to assume, and it probably would be very popular, that if people wanted to use the venue, it would not be limited to any specific people. I mean, all you've got to do is buy a plant, you're a customer. So, I, I think that legality comes in. And of course, as you said, it goes on to say that they would wish to host company parties, receptions, anniversaries, family reunions, baby showers, none of which have anything to do with agriculture. Again, I was told, and I do appreciate about the fact that it couldn't even be done without the special, uh, amusement permit because it's assumed that, and most of these, there certainly would be, uh, entertainment, music or such would be, would be wanted. The, uh, parking, there is quite a bit, but it's very, as I say, I live next door, there's lots, uh, in and out. I can't see that they could have events going on quite at the same time, not a hundred and fifty people coming in and still parking while there was a regular, uh, usage there. Something that I appreciate, it's been basically mentioned, but I will just refer again, the abutters, I live in, um, obviously on Fairway Drive and Pleasant Hill Woods. We are twenty-nine, single-family homes in a residential community. The abutters on the other side are Magnolia Place. And I can't give you an exact number, but I'm quite certain there must be at least fifty homes there. Uh, they're single residential owned by people who are fifty-five or over. The area is residential. It was all farming when I lived here in nineteen seventy-seven, that was another time. I assume that that probably had to be rezoned to become specifically residential. And in looking over those things, what I am respectfully saying is that to be asked to create a special entertainment venue for hosting events, which a lot of the time wouldn't have anything to do with agriculture, and which would be situated in the middle of one hundred single-family homes, does not seem appropriate to me. I thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you. I appreciate your time too. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Ertman. I live at Fifteen Fairway Drive. Um, if you were to expand the map, you'll see that I live on that cul-de-sac, um, on the opposite side, but I have a pretty direct line of sight. Uh, you can see that the area is treed as it extends, uh, behind my home to the lot on Thirty-One Fairway Drive. It's fairly treed as it looks over toward the greenhouse property. But just to the left of that, if you bring the arrow down further down Fairway Drive, uh, that's pretty open. There, there is tree, there is scrub there, uh, but that would be pretty open to uh, where my house and most of the houses in our neighborhood sit, uh, which is where the proposed venue location would be. Uh, as Pat indicated, we are a neighborhood, a residential community of twenty-nine homes um, in Magnolia Place. Uh, behind us, if you, again, if you were to expand out beyond our, uh, cul-de-sac on the opposite side, uh, you see quite a few more residential homes, Schooner Drive, um, and in and around the, the Pleasant Hill neighborhood. So, you can see that there are a number of residential homes. With regard to things that we hear, um, as a regular, um, occurrence during the summer months, we can regularly hear, right over my shoulder here, um, and probably sing along to um, events at the Thursday Summer Concert Series, which we can hear pretty regularly. Uh, we have the train that goes through, um, which we hear pretty loud and clear. Um, we can even hear, if the wind is blowing right, we can hear Beach Ridge Motor Speedway, which is three or four miles away. My home sits probably two hundred yards, as the crow flies, from this proposed venue center. So, my concern would be, um, uh, educational programs and things along those of that nature would probably be fine, but I don't know of many wedding receptions where the music cuts off at nine o'clock and things wind down or what have you. Um, wedding showers typically probably don't get too raucous and everything, but the concern would be, uh, things that go into the evening hours, after dark, um, literally on our back doorstep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Nancy Mattson, and I live at Five Fairway Drive. Um, I don't know if you can see it on the map. Right there.
I'll ask you.
Right there. So, my concern is about, you know, not about, um, workshops or, or things that have to do with agriculture. It's a lovely, a lovely greenhouse, that, you know, an asset to the community, um, really beautiful place. But I feel like this special, uh, permit has nothing to do with agriculture. It has more to do with having an event center. Um, and the way the language is, anything could happen. Um, there's nothing to restrain the number of events we have. We could, literally, the way things are written, we could have an event every day. Uh, there's nothing about the, uh, limit to, um, the noise. Um, it would mean that I would never be able to have my windows open. My house shakes when my neighbors play music. Um, my deck, my backyard, as well as the people of Magnolia Place, all of their decks face that way. There's, we hear everything. And, um, you know, so that's, that's a very, that's my concern, is the noise. And also the fact that I think it would harm our property values to be next to something that created and had the potential to create such a lot, such a large amount of noise. But thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'm at Olson, One Fairway Drive. With all due respect to my neighbors, I, I really don't have a problem with, uh, with this, um, proposition or proposal. Um, th- these are young people, they're trying to, to build their business, um, economically, uh, you know. We need to, to further these kind of things, and I, Nancy particularly is the closest. I, I understand her concerns on this, the noise. But it seems to be that the noise ordinances would take care of this. And, uh, and, you know, we just need to get along and, and, and it's up to you folks how you want to decide. I, I just wanted to say I don't have a problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Did we receive any letters or emails? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, the board is gonna discuss the application and do the findings, the facts, and conclusions of law. So, A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reasons of sewage disposal or emissions to the air or water or other aspects of its design and operation. Uh, the applicant did a good job explaining exactly how they're gonna be using the portable bathroom trailers. And that they would only be specifically on the, on the place just for those events and then removed. I appreciate that. I don't know if anyone has any comments, um?
None.
Ms. Torrance?
I, I feel like they've, um, like their proposal has addressed that adequately.
Uh, as was shared, there are other accessible, um, restroom facilities on-site that are existing. Um, depending upon the use and the time of the event, the projected occupancy, additional facilities would be provided, as was shared, so I do not see any concerns with A.
I agree. Um, stated in the application and spoken here this evening, um, the bathroom trailer, um, the portable bathroom trailer would be hauled in and out based on the event, if it's even needed, if there even is an event on that particular day. Um, so there's no really, uh, opportunity to create unsanitary or unhealthy conditions. The trailer's not gonna be there for all six months of the summertime that's taken away afterwards and then, uh, through licensed vendors. Similarly, um, this may not go to unsanitary and healthy, but any food or alcohol vendors that come in, they said they would have to be licensed. And per the town, they would have to have special permits for that as well. So, I believe that is covered.
I agree.
Okay, yep. I mean, I don't feel that there would be any changes in the air or water emissions. All in favor of A being met? B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when adding to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. Um, the applicant has represented they have eighty-seven spots. I'm sure they can get eighty-seven cars in there. Um, they are however proposing to change, to do different uses, and now want to do a capacity of a hundred and fifty, which would be different. I don't know if they've, does the board feel they've demonstrated that it won't be unsafe?
So, I, I feel like the requirement that they would need to obtain additional permitting for anything in excess of a hundred people is adequate to address this, this concern. Um, you know, I think eighty-seven car, parking spots for a hundred people is a very reasonable number. Um, oftentimes, if you've got an event that's gonna address a hundred and fifty people, I think you're probably gonna be dealing with eighty-seven spots still being quite adequate. Um, but I, I feel comfortable enough in the fact that there is going to be a second level of supervision and, and oversight on this particular topic.
What, uh, comment I'd like to make is, uh, I'm very impressed with the fact that they're doing this in order to build sales during a very slow time of the year. In fact, in between seasons, in between the spring and fall seasons. It's a way of filling in a slow time, and during these times, it was traditionally only about maximum number of six cars parked right there where they're talking about doing this. So, there are a lot of empty spaces. And I'm big, and again, I, you know, based on my knowledge of what you need, how many people come in per car, it's, it is an average of around two and a half people per car. Um, I mean, some more, some less, obviously, but that's more than enough parking. And also, I don't think it'll put any undue, uh, burden on access to egress on Highland, which is of course a busy street, but at the same time, this is during what's otherwise a slow time of the year for them. And, uh, because of that, it's not gonna be any different than during their peak time in April and May. And, uh, because of that, you know, I agree they're satisfying the, uh, this particular turn in.
I agree. I don't see any issues with the proposed increase, um, in occupancy and parking for those in attendance, um, as well as any issues with, uh, traffic in and out of the site.
I'll add to that as well, that they've, um, stated that there's the pumpkin festival that they have in October where they had nine hundred people sort of cycle through that property in a day, uh, which is impressive, which is quite impressive. And, um, so with that, you know, there's already traffic there, and there haven't been any historical issues during that time of year with this. Uh, also piggybacking on Day's point and others made, um, you know, eighty-seven spots, you know, you would have to, there'd be quite a few people. If you have two people per car, they would exceed the occupancy level there. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, those are the biggest, the biggest points that I wanted to, uh, make there.
All in favor of B being met? C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. Uh, the applicant has represented that they already are doing some of these events there, and they haven't run into any problems. Um, I do have some, some concerns about having events where there's, you know, we talk about the nine hundred flowing in and out, but this is an event where there's all people coming at once and leaving at once. Um, I don't think substantially that would create any sort of problem. I'm not sure.
Um, my opinion on this is that even if they were, e- even if you have an event, people still typically, if you've got a big event, a lot, most people do not leave all at the same time.
Right.
They stagger. They arrive, they arrive staggered and they leave staggered.
They'll leave when the music comes off.
Um, I, I don't see this as, as being any increased burden on public safety than what's, what's currently being- than what's currently being done at the property.
I agree with that. I don't see it being substantially different than what the existing uses are currently housed on the, at the site. In addition to that, as was previously shared, should anything above a hundred projected people be foreseen or anticipated, there would be those additional steps and permits required.
One point I would like to make that they mentioned, in the event, and Rudy, you brought this question up early, in the event of an emergency, should emergency vehicles need to get there? They do, or they are, excuse me, they're able to have access to the site. The applicant stated that they have had fire trucks on site in the past during October, during the pumpkin festival. So to me, that's a clear indication that the site is able to withstand traffic of an emergency vehicle that would have to get in there should there be an emergency. So in addition to that, going back to my earlier point of, again, nine hundred people going through in a day during October for this pumpkin festival. Granted, this will be a little bit different if they have late afternoon, early nighttime events, but I'll touch upon that when I get to the letter I for my explanation. But I'll note that the applicant stated that they would be amenable to a restriction based on time for any sort of amplified entertainment to be shut down. And I mentioned nine o'clock and they had meant, said that that would possibly be a solution. That way, there is a designated time when everything would shut off. And nine o'clock would be a little bit early. We could discuss that, whatever the time is at that point. But nine o'clock is earlier than ten, which I think ten o'clock is in the Good Neighbor Ordinance. On weekends, yeah. So there is, there is that, just in respect to earlier.
You know, under C though, it says, would it require substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection? I mean, protection, I look at this as, are they going to get more phone calls? And I don't know if under this one you would, I do feel like they would be getting phone calls. We just heard from neighbors. So I mean, I think there will be an increase if suddenly they're doing bigger events. And even if the neighbors know there's a Good Neighbor Ordinance and they're going to have to stop at nine o'clock, but they think it's too loud at seven o'clock. I do have some concerns about that issue, calling on the police and the police unnecessarily having to come because they, neighbors feel it is too loud. And that's what we're already kind of hearing is that we don't want it loud. So I do have concerns in that, but you guys obviously are good neighbors and you've been living there for a long time and want to remain good neighbors. I don't know if anyone has any.
I would add to the, just to add on to what you were saying. There are existing regulations in the township for dealing with police issues as well as sound levels and so forth that are in effect and are very reasonable. And if individual members of the community don't know what they are, I'm sure the police can explain it to them very quickly. And, you know, and it is not necessary for police to come out if it's just within standards. And I would hope it would be. I mean, we're not talking about rock concerts here, like Rock Row. I know there are a lot of problems in Westbrook right now, but that's not what we're talking about here.
No, but there were, it's a residential neighborhood that was approved to do live music.
Yeah, but there are standards on that.
The police are throwing up their hands and saying the town gave them the permission to do this. And so we today, or we are in that position, we're the ones giving them permission to now start doing bigger events. And I foresee this doing great. Who doesn't want to have an event? And I mean, we've seen the other places in Scarborough do very well with this. I think they'll do very well, but I could see it getting a little out of control. And so I, you know, I don't want our police to be, you know, having to come out there or our residents to have to be told, no, it's not our problem.
I think there's a vast difference between Rock Row or a situation anywhere close to that and a max capacity of a hundred and fifty people and, and a, an ordinance that, or, you know, an expectation that they're going to abide by the Good Neighbor Ordinance and respect that and there's, you know, would be a qualification for that. I don't, I don't see that this is going to get into the same hot water as that whole situation did.
Right.
If I may add to that, with respect to that point, I think it is, it's our, our, our job to allow, to allow this or not. But I think there's a compromise that could be made here. There's a middle ground that can be reached between the residents and the folks here from Highland Farm. I mean, I think we just impose some strict conditions on the time that they can operate, the functions, any kind of function or amplified entertainments contained to the principal, I'll say the principal building, but the new building, the new greenhouse that's interior to it, so that there wouldn't be, you know, an opportunity to set up shop outside, start playing music that way. We could also make it a condition that there needs to be some additional plantings planted at the edge of the field to help create that buffer or reinforce that buffer even visually as well. Give that a few years and that can grow and really, and really block that. And then depending on, and I would ask Brian to, we end this one if, when we get to this point, but you know, we can say no vehicles will be allowed to park street side in front of this. In front of this event, you would have to park inside. Inside the place where all the vehicles will be contained to the parking laws. And granted, not everybody's perfect. Someone's going to bend the rules, but if they're cognizant and just go out and say like, hey, you need to move your car. Things like that. So I think we can, we can reach a middle ground here by imposing some conditions and requirements as part of a possible approval of this appeal.
Is there a sidewalk there? And so then what, right down the street is a school, right? Okay. So you really wouldn't want people parking along the road because then people who would be walking to the school
Right.
would then be walking in the road. Okay.
The only thing I would add to imposing additional conditions is, I don't think it's necessary at all unless it's something that is not covered within the existing requirements that have been established for the town. And in this particular case, there are standards established. The Good Neighbor, you know, stipulates nine PM on weekdays, ten PM on weekends, if I understand it correctly. And I think we're really out of our bounds to start imposing standards.
I absolutely agree with you on that, for several reasons. Number one being that any, you know, I'm in a band. I mean, if I decided I wanted to practice until ten AM or ten PM at night, on a Saturday night, in my own garage, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But because it's a business that's, that's, you know, operating. I also feel like we're, we're jumping the gun to the fact that there's going to be live music at these events and things like that. You know, we're failing to allow for the approval for an amusement permit to actually be granted. And I think we're outside of our boundaries
We're not.
and, and jumping ahead into a domain that's not ours to be ruled, legislated on. I think, you know, we're discussing whether the potential for having these events is, is going to be allowed to be there. There's going to be another layer that is going to define what the boundaries are of those events. And I don't think that's under our jurisdiction. That's just my opinion.
May I?
Go ahead.
Make a comment to build off what was just shared. My opinion is a bit mixed. It is in agreement with the established standards of the Good Neighbor Ordinance and additional permitting and steps that would have to be required. However, as the special exceptionist looking for perhaps any changes to what's currently being done with the agricultural or educational facilities. To that end, any increased or addition of noise, music, live music, amplified music, I tend to see as a change beyond what's existing. So with regard to imposing any conditions, that can certainly be discussed when we get to I. But my opinion is that I don't think that it's, it's certainly within our realm to do tonight.
So all in favor of C being met? D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. The applicant did a good job at explaining how they're going to be moving a building and actually cutting down on erosion a little bit because they will not be farming that area that they were previously farming before. Ms. Torrance?
Yeah, I believe they've adequately addressed this issue and, and I'm sure that given the nature of their business and they're, they have an additional concern and that they would, and an additional benefit to actually making sure that what they do is responsible in that regard. So I have no problem with this one.
I agree. Do not see any adverse effects with water supplies. If they're moving a portion of the existing greenhouse to a different location, any projected water usage may overall be the same. And they're going to have the truckable restrooms as needed.
Right.
I would say that, building off of what Rudy just said and Melinda, you're taking down a section of the greenhouse and you're building another one there. So I won't say it's a wash as far as building coming down, coming back up, but that effort is being made. I would also, if it previously being used as a greenhouse, if active, I would say that there would be less water usage because it won't be a dedicated space for growing plants and things like that. Whereas this would just, they wouldn't be growing, they wouldn't be having a greenhouse out here in the middle of the field. It would just be, it would be the event space that not necessarily would be used all the time. Lastly, nope, that was it. That's all I, thank you.
To me, the key point is because there's less tillland, there's less emergency.
Okay. All in favor of D being met? E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development. I'm, the applicant has done this, shown us that they're proposing to just move a greenhouse from one area to another. So the visual impact will be different. And because now it looks like there's going to be, I think as the neighbor was saying, he was behind it, and now there's going to be a greenhouse closer to him. And this greenhouse will be doing a different use than what was being done in the greenhouse before and holding events and things like that. Compatible to the existing uses in the neighborhood. You know, I think they're trying to do what they can with the farm area they have and it is allowed under, as a special exception.
I see it as being no more, no less compatible than the current use. And I think that's where my definition would be, is that I don't believe that there's anything that's so significantly changing in the visual, the visual impact or the intensity. That would really cause me to have a concern about this particular aspect.
I also do not see any concerns with this aspect, E. Compatible with the existing uses, physical size, relocating on site, visual impact, its greenhouse versus the other greenhouses, intensity of use. While we have been discussing the number of a hundred and fifty, as previously shared, nine hundred are projected, and historically have potentially passed through the site. And proximity to other structures, still centrally located, adjacent to other greenhouses. So I don't see any issues with this.
I agree, Rudy. Similar point with me. All, these structures are already more or less in place. You already have greenhouses there, you already have equipment there, you already have an operation that's been going on there for many years. They're removing a section of the building and building another portion of the building. Again, previously is sort of washed as far as square footage is concerned, more or less. And then they already have events here, like you said, Rudy, nine hundred people coming and going during pumpkin fest. And, and there hasn't been a point stated tonight that there hasn't been any issues with that event that has gone on, that anyone has voiced here tonight, which I would like to know.
To me, it just does not change the character at all. If anything, it does improve the, the physical appearance because from what I've seen in the drawings, this entire area, the structure itself and the grounds around it will be very, very attractive and appealing to, you know, to anybody who will look at it.
All in favor of E being met? F, if located in a shoreline zone. They are not located in a shoreline zone, all in favor of that. G, the applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use. The applicant has represented that they are the owner of the property and they have provided a deed as well.
I think the deed that's provided is sufficient to establish ownership and the right to use the property.
No comment?
Nothing to add there?
No comment.
All in favor of G being met? H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. The applicant has represented that they do have the technical and financial ability. They already have a successful business on there. They've represented that they're going to be able to get a line of credit and do personal financing themselves. I don't know if we would be imposing any sort of conditions that might incur more costs. I know we have neighbors here tonight and I don't know if it's unreasonable for us to ask them to maybe put something up so they can protect the neighbors more, be it a fence or some trees or something. You know, these people bought a house next to a farm and I think there's definitely some concerns that we've heard tonight about the visual impact of seeing now parties out in the middle of a field and the noises that they would be hearing. I do believe that they do have the financial ability to do that.
No comment? I think that's fine.
I also see no issues with this. It's shared the seventeenth anniversary, that's certainly a great foundation that they've built upon, a successful business.
With my comment that I'd like to add to this, again, as stated, they have a business line of credit through Bath Savings Institution. They stated earlier that they would be okay with any conditions imposed on the board and they would have the financial capability to meet those. Also, I'll point out, you know, with regard if, if there were a condition to put up some extra, additional plantings or trees or something like that on the periphery of the property to help sort of break up, or not break up, but try to eliminate or reduce the visual impact from there. I'll also note on one of the conceptual rendering plans that were, that were shown here, there is, there are parking spaces, there's this one, Brian, if you want to bring this one up. I'll point out on here, right there, that appears to be that there are some sizable greenery that's going to be planted between the vehicles and the proposed greenhouse. So that way, people pulling into there is thought to the applicant, making sure that those are high enough, thick enough to sort of block any headlights if people are backing out of there and going on their way. Granted, they're backing out and they'll be driving out to Highland Avenue, but just considerations that people should think about.
I don't think there's any question about financial ability, especially with a project that's going to increase sales and profits.
Okay, all in favor of H being met? I, the proposed use will be compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation. The applicant has said that they will comply with the Good Neighbor Ordinance in regards to the noise and hours of operation. We discussed those. We also heard from some neighbors tonight who expressed some of the concerns that I feel any neighbor would have. If I lived there, I would not want to be hearing music or large events, you know, into the evening. Things like that. When we talk about our authority as the zoning board, this is exactly, we are the only people who are giving them permission to do this. This is the only time that they will be before us for someone to regulate this. So I foresee them having a very successful event, venue here. And what we don't want is to decrease the value of the neighbors around them. I mean, you're a realtor. You know that the value of the properties are going to decrease if suddenly these neighbors can't open their windows in. You know that the value of the properties are going to decrease if suddenly these neighbors can't open their windows in. And these neighbors have music going or they have floods of cars going through or things like that. Or someone took a wrong turn, suddenly they're driving through your neighborhood, looping around because they missed the turn or something like that. And so this is exactly what our job here, and this is where I think we need to talk about this because we have multiple people here tonight who express their concern. I mean, this is a residential neighborhood. And I understand there is a good neighbor ordinance. I think 10:00 PM is too late for a residential neighborhood. And I open this up to the board to give me their feedback on that.
So let's see where to begin. So a few things. I do believe that abiding by the good neighbor ordinance with respect to normal business that they will be conducting at this particular venue, if we disregard any concern about live music or amplification, all of the, anything that would be required to have a separate permit. I think if we, if we push that off to the side and we just are looking at the proposed use complying with the good neighbor ordinance, I believe we can't disregard that. I think if we are talking, because we're making assumptions that they're going to have have live music or have amplified, you know, an auction or something, you know, I mean, anything is obnoxious, right? That's going to require additional permitting that is, is going to put limitations based on what is proposed. And the neighbors will have an opportunity, again, I believe, to, you know, to discuss that, I think. But the, when I look at, at a concern like this, I'm looking at this as, I see people have backyard parties all the time. I've been to many, I've performed at many. I see, as I'm sure you have also. And I see, you know, I see neighbors have birthday parties, baby showers, wedding showers. All of that stuff is normal residential activity. And what we're talking about is just multiple occurrences of that at the same property. And that also could happen just as easily in a residential property that had nothing to do with the business. So when I look at these things, I try to look at it as, how is this being used in a way that's incompatible with a private residence?
Well, Melinda, do you think we should limit? Because you're talking about like, I have a party once a year with a band. Should be maybe the limit?
I know people who do that every weekend. I do. There are, there are people that do that every weekend and then there are other people that never do that.
Right.
I, you know, I listen to the neighbors and I'm very sympathetic, but I also listen to them say that they already have problems with noise in the neighborhood. And it's got nothing to do with the farm. And so when I, when I hear that, that also tells me that this is not a problem with the business. It's a problem in the neighborhood, maybe with the houses that are, you know, how they were built, whatever it is. I'm not saying that it's right. I'm just saying that I think we have to be cautious not to penalize one party over another when it comes to their land use. And it's just a, it's, it's hard to be consistently sympathetic. So yes, so the things that kind of caught my attention was that there was already complaints about noise from neighbors already being a problem and noise from the area being a problem, being able to hear beach ridge and other things. Some of that is beyond control. I do think that what we're asking and what we need to make sure is very clear is that, yes, the applicant is, must comply with the good neighbor ordinance, must comply with any additional restrictions placed upon them from an amusement permit and any other licensing or compliance issues that they must need. Must be done the proper, through the proper channels in a buy-to-buy. I think beyond that, I, I see no cause for restricting their use when it's really not incompatible with residential living from a standpoint of what they're offering to, or what they're approaching to do. That's my opinion.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. As previously shared in the earlier commentary item, my biggest concern with this would be with the amplification of noise. While it would be certainly a benefit if additional trees or vegetation was planted at the perimeter of the property, that's something that not a good, but a great neighbor would consider. But at this time, just the amplification of noise.
Melinda, I mean, Ms. Torrance, do you feel, I mean, I just, you are, you are, you are a realtor. I'm curious, you know, I mean, do you feel like if suddenly this, if they continue to do events and it gets loud, it would decrease the value of some of these properties behind there if the volume increased and the intensity and things like that?
Perhaps, Mr. Longstaff, do you have a better, how often does one need to apply for an amusement permit? Is that an annual application? So the worst-case scenario would be that this goes through for a year and becomes problematic and that amusement permit is pulled and they cannot continue to operate in the same way. Similarly, each additional year, they're going to have to operate within a certain boundary of behavior that is going to be consistent with allowing people to, to be able to be tolerant of what is going on or else that amusement permit's going to be revoked. And so I do feel confident that that is sufficient enough. And also, I think it's sufficient enough to protect the homeowners. And I, I think it's also, I just, I really struggle with, I don't think we can go beyond our scope on this one of what we're actually evaluating. And we need to rely on the other departments that are going to follow behind us to establish the additional limitations because they already exist.
Explain this amusement permit to me. I'm unaware of how this works. They get a permit for a year for who? For the town council. Okay, so the town council issues a permit for a year for them to be able to do these type of events.
And it can put restrictions on it.
So then if the residents are not happy, they can then complain to town council and the town council can then not renew the amusement for next year.
Precisely. And I believe that the, the town council can also impose certain restrictions such as like an 8:00, 8:00 PM limitation or something like that, if I, if I'm understanding correctly?
Without getting too far, too far into the weeds.
Right.
I think we need to stick to our knitting here, but yeah, the council has the ability to develop its criteria for issuing special amusement permits. They have not done so. But they, they can, it's written into the orders that they can. If they, on an annual renewal, if they have received multiple complaints about something, yeah, they, they could do something about that. They could deny the permit, they could impose conditions, they could do other things. In all honesty, I have not seen that happen.
Not seen it happen in terms of not receiving complaints and having them act upon them or receiving complaints and not acting on it?
I haven't seen them impose any conditions or deny permit based on complaints.
And that's, this is where I come back to, this is our authority. And I know you sometimes feel like maybe this isn't our authority, but this is. And this is kind of where, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, but we have the concerns from the neighbors. I feel a lot better knowing that there is another check and balance. That so if this does become a major issue, now the applicants are aware that there are consequences and they can lose it. Which is very helpful to me because I was unaware of the details of that.
And that's part of why I brought this up is that I, I think, you know, and I'm kind of curious, I actually am kind of curious, I don't know if it's appropriate to, to ask the neighbors again how they feel about this, if they were aware of this particular, you know, ability to consult the council and, and request that they deny a special amusement permit? Or is that something you're familiar with?
I actually got very good information. I'm very thankful when I spoke to the people there. What I am wondering, and Mr. Corrigan was very helpful in answering, so I know that, I'm sorry, I can't remember his last name.
Do you want to go up to the podium?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I hope, I hope I didn't go up. And I apologize if I'm out of, out of order in asking.
We can't, we can't do public speaking right now.
This is gonna take all night.
Right, okay, yep. That's what I was afraid of. I wasn't sure. That's why I was asking if it was appropriate.
I'm gonna go through the chair.
Yep.
So.
My thought on this is that, I mean, you know, backyard parties aside, yes, average 20 maybe to 50, but we're looking at 150 people that are gonna, potentially, that are going to be here. The applicant has stated they're gonna comply with the good neighbor ordinance. And they've emphasized again, again, throughout this speak with them this evening that they will be good neighbors and really be cognizant of the issues that are going on there. And I don't see it as any large issue at all to impose a condition that they plant additional greenery or trees or however, whatever it is on the perimeter of their property to break up the sound, to break up the visual impact. And I don't see, it's, it is within our scope to impose these types of conditions. And I don't think it's unreasonable, again, we have to compromise here, this is in the middle of a residential area, that, you know, 10 o'clock might be a little bit too late. And they've, as I mentioned earlier, 9 o'clock, they seem to nod their head and be amenable to that. So I think that'd be more than reasonable to do it and keep it like that.
Okay. Where do I start? Let's, first thing I'd like to just talk about is noise. Noise is both a subjective and an objective thing. Everybody's perception of noise is different. However, it can be measured in terms of decibels. That's the standard way of measuring noise. And we have regulations in place to do that. And there are limitations as to how much noise can, you know, is acceptable. It's up to, you know, the people who are applying for this, if we grant this variance, to stick with that and they've said they would. The other thing they said they would do is to keep all of the music inside of the building. That's very important because that contains the noise. If it were outdoors, it would broadcast it out into the neighborhood. And there are already some trees there. I just don't think it's necessary to impose stipulations for additional trees, you know, whatever, okay? I think their landscaping plan is very sufficient to make this an attractive property. I, I just do not understand why it would be necessary for us to impose any kind of special restrictions on this. Whatever the, you know, existing good neighbor policy says, if it's 9 o'clock, except on the weekends, 10 o'clock, then that should be it. We shouldn't say, oh, it's gotta be 9 o'clock every night or only 8 o'clock or 7. I think that's totally unreasonable. You know, this is within a neighborhood and technically they're in a, you know, a neighborhood zone, okay? So yes, they have to comply with standards of the neighborhood. And I think that they understand that. And, you know, given the distance between, you know, where they are and the neighboring houses, it's much greater than the distance between houses within a subdivision. And, and I think that we're all aware of the fact that, you know, individuals within a subdivision, any property or apartments for that matter, can have loud parties, okay? So, I mean, this happens. And it has to be dealt with and there are rules to enforce that and regulate it. I, I'm firmly opposed to any kind of restrictions on noise or anything else in terms of additional landscaping. I think the plan speaks for itself. It's a solid plan. It's very attractive. And I, I believe that, you know, with all the experience the applicants have had running this business over the years, I'm confident they're gonna do it the right way.
All right. I could just make a comment based on his. I am in agreement with much of what you shared. And as you've shared tonight, we've heard that those representing this are open and agreeable to keeping the music inside. Any amplification within the greenhouse itself. I personally, my opinion, would just feel comfortable having that in writing. That's all.
Yes, I agree. I think making it clarified that the music will always be inside would be good to the benefit of the neighbors who are here tonight, who live there and are asking us because they came here tonight and they gave us our time and they've lived in this neighborhood for a long time. And this is the only time that they get to be heard.
Yep. And I mean, no disrespect.
I don't think it's unreasonable for us to do a buffer. We've toyed with the idea in the past and we should have done one on appeal in the past. And when I drive by it, I'm like, we really should have made them put up a fence. And, you know, I think we have these neighbors here today. And I think, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable for these folks to try to expand their business and do this. But I think they also need to recognize that this is a different use. Your neighbors are here, you are a good neighbor, your neighbors want to be heard. They do not want to be hearing this music and, you know, all this noise. And I personally feel that a venue of 100-plus people with live music is very different than a backyard barbecue. And this is a residential neighborhood and when I look at that lot, it's not that big. And those houses are not that far away. And I really don't know how many trees are between your view and that house. So I do feel that we, it would be in the benefit to the neighbors and to everyone to make it a qualification that the music remain inside and that it is in writing. I can see it very quickly and very easily getting hot or becoming an issue or just one bride really wants that band outside, you know? And I think try to find a compromise, again, because this is a very residential neighborhood and you're surrounded by houses and by a school and things like that.
I, I'd like to add one more or a couple more things. One, I don't think it's really, I think maybe imposing music beyond a certain hour of the day be contained inside, but I, I don't believe that we should force somebody that, you know, if they're gonna do an afternoon thing or something like that, they may want to have a little acoustic music even outside that might be amplified. And I don't believe it should have to be throttled back just because we've said that everything has to occur inside, especially if it's like 1 to 3 or something like that. So I think just let's, let's weigh that into our, our, our thinking about these things.
What about music inside after a certain hour?
Can I?
I have no idea. I'm just throwing something out there.
Let me finish my other thought too. One of the things that I know very, very well about this business is that they thrive on the community members that are surrounding them and that is their customer base. And they are not, I do not see them being foolish enough to tick off their customer base. I, I just don't see that happening. I think that there, there's, there's an additional layer of politeness that is going to happen naturally and organically just based on the fact that they are neighbors in the, in, of their property that we're talking about. And the neighbors that visit this establishment now and support it year-round are the, are the people that are gonna be either at odds with this or, you know. I just, that's, so that's just one other thing that weighs into my decision-making or my, my thoughts about this is that, you know, I think they'd be out of business pretty quick if they took, ticked off the neighbors. I, I just.
While I live next to a business that is very local and has proceeded to upset all the neighbors and they don't care because they're making lots of money now. And so, you know, you kind of have to look at it down the road a little. Do we?
Madam Chair, I would recommend at this point, we move on, we move to approve the appeal. And then, and once we're in that, we can have a discussion and then impose any conditions. And we vote on those individually at that point or not. So with that said, I move to approve appeal number 2661. Oh, sorry. Oh, the last.
Oh, that's right. So we need to vote on I?
So I?
So all in favor of I being met? Do we have a motion?
I would like to move to approve appeal number 2661.
Second?
Okay, so now we're in the discussion portion of the, of the motion. At this time, I would like to, I would like to move to add the condition that any amplified entertainment be contained to the greenhouse itself. Amplified entertainment.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I disagree with that, I think anything, maybe perhaps after six P M., I would be in favor of, but during the day, it's gonna get blistering hot in a greenhouse in the middle of summer, and instruments don't like that anyway, and you would basically be limiting their business to a certain degree at that point. When I don't feel it's necessary. I think, you know, you've got decibel limits. I think, you know, if we wanted to set a time that's, you know, aft at dusk, or, you know, at six P M., anything beyond that must be in the greenhouse, I'd be fine with that.
I think that seems reasonable.
Okay, then I'll amend my condition to state that amplified music is to
And I wouldn't listen to music either, I would, any amplification can't be used after six P M. outside.
Electronic amplification cannot be used outside of the proposed greenhouse after six P M.
Sounds good.
I'm in favor of that.
That's a second, okay.
That's a second, sorry.
After six P M.
After six P M. Then it would have to be contained to the principal structure.
I agree with that.
I'm comfortable with that now, knowing the neighbors have other remedies to deal if this becomes out of control. I am, yes.
And with that, I don't see the need to put in place, they have to be done by a certain time, they can go by the good neighbor ordinance at that point.
Correct.
Correct.
Because everything will be contained to the principal struc, the new structure that's gonna be on site. So I guess is that approved? Vote on it? We vote on the condition.
Some motion to approve with the condition?
Yeah, and you have that written down, Doreen?
Is that the only condition?
So an additional condition I would like to impose is that the applicant plant additional greenery, whether it's a tree, or a bush, or something like that, on the periphery of their property adjacent to the neighbors, on the extent of their boundary, property boundary. And again, this is all for the purpose of a compromise.
Please have a slide to show what that looks like.
Not necessarily covering the entire boundary, but if there are gaps on the tree line, that is the intent of this condition.
Aren't there north, southeast, west photos showing the tree line from ground level, instead of from the air? I'm not sure which direction is. That's looking at it from north.
Yeah, so you're looking at the back.
Are you facing north?
Facing north.
Facing north.
So that's facing towards our own.
That's from the, yeah.
And there seems to be a substantial amount of greenery there already in place, but
Very mature tree.
Some supplemental stuff that could be put out there, again, good gesture.
So this view would be facing toward the east, which would be the neighbors over here, or over here.
Over there, yeah.
What kind of, how many square, or how many feet are we talking about?
I'd rather not get into that.
No, I'm just, but it makes a difference as far as whether we impose this or not.
It certainly does, but I'd like to leave that up to the, I would like to leave that up to the discretion of the applicant, for how many branch or trees that they think would be necessary to plant out there.
Might be a good conversation with a neighbor.
A good conversation with a neighbor.
It's a very
It is kinda open, I understand.
It's a very open one, that would be hard to do.
All right, so we don't have a second, or did we ask for a second yet?
There is no second, so it's not really anything yet, unless someone really wants to force the issue on that.
I'm not quite sure how we would enforce that.
Yeah, and plus it's also a little bit open-ended, so we don't necessarily have to go with that one, then. Since we can't necessarily define, and we're not gonna ask them to plant eight hundred feet worth of trees there, that's not reasonable. Also, if it's left open-ended, a neighbor could potentially force them to cover, for example, all eight hundred feet of a property.
Exactly.
I would think that just containing amplified music would be more than enough at this point. I think the point has been made to the applicant that this is an issue, and they may use that at their own discretion to handle this on their own. Again, stating repeatedly that they want to be good neighbors, and they're gonna comply with the good neighbor ordinance. We can just leave it at that, though.
No.
So the only condition we have so far is that they just have to keep the music inside after six to the structure.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second?
Nothing. All in favor? Okay, so that passes with the restriction of the amplified music being inside at six P M. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, yes, yes. Okay. Two hours later.
We knew that would be the hard one.
We have appeal number two six six two, which is a variance appeal by the design company on behalf of Champion Realty Trust, which is Dan Fitzgerald, Six Champion Street, accessors map, U one, lot eighty seven. I'm gonna ask Mr. Longstaff to give us a little background of this application, please.
Yes, this is a variance appeal being that the property is both within the shoreline zone and the flood plain. It's not eligible for any other type of variance. Basically, very similar to an appeal that was heard, I think, in two thousand seventeen. The cottage, the proposal is to remove and replace the existing cottage with another dwelling. Our ordinance, and our shoreline zoning ordinance, chapter four oh five C, says, if a non-conforming building or structure is demolished or removed by or for its owner, it shall not be rebuilt or replaced except in conformity with the requirements of section fifteen B of the ordinance. Fifteen B requires that all dwellings or structures be located more than seventy-five feet from the highest annual tide line. This whole property is pretty much within that seventy-five foot buffer, as are several other properties down at Higgins Beach. So it's not an uncommon issue or problem to, or challenge, if you will, to have. And so, Mr. Wilson's gonna explain to you, his reasoning as to why he believes that this is going to qualify for that variance.
Okay.
Okay, Walter Wilson from the design company. There's a couple of things I've gotta talk to you about tonight, but the first thing I wanna do is read what I gave the board as to what we wanna do. I'm representing Dan Fitzgerald and Champion Realty Trust in the application of the Board of Appeals for a variance to demolish and replace an existing residential building at Six Champion Street pursuant to the shoreline zoning ordinance. Properties identified in the Scarborough tax maps is lot U O one dash eighty-seven, located in the C D C R one Higgins Beach character zone. According to the Scarborough tax assessor's records, the existing residence was constructed in nineteen sixty-six. The property has access to Champion Street over an easement across the abutis property, and has beach frontage on the Atlantic Ocean. There is no immediate street frontage on the spot. A concrete seawall bisects the property, resulting in a usable lot size of fifty foot by seventy-three feet, containing basically thirty-six hundred square feet. The site is also affected by several overlay districts from the town in Scarborough and other government agencies. These districts include the Scarborough zoning district, the Scarborough shoreline zoning ordinance, FEMA flood zone, frontal dune regulations, erosion hazard area regulations, Department of Environmental Protection regulations, and, like Brian has indicated, the highest annual tide hat line, where within the seventy-five foot setback. The shoreline zoning ordinance allows for the replacement of an existing structure if the proposal conforms to section fifteen B, or a variance is given by the zoning board of appeals. The ordinance also permits the structure to be increased in size up to thirty percent in square footage and volume, and to be relocated to conform to the setback requirements to the greatest extent practical. The proposed building size and location actually satisfies these requirements. The existing building has a concrete block foundation and a crawl space. The shoreline zoning ordinance requires the lowest floor level to be elevated at least one foot above the hundred-year flood plain. The D E P allows for the replacement of buildings under chapter three fifty-five, section six D, and also under section six G. And they state, all buildings modified or reconstructed must have the lowest portion of the structural members of the lowest floor constructed on a post and piling foundation, and to be elevated at least three feet above the highest natural elevation around the foundation. So they are more restrictive than the town, and the existing foundation is non-compliance with those requirements. The natural, the highest natural elevation around the property is set at eleven foot four inches. The existing building is at twelve foot nine. Using the D E P rule, the first floor elevation must be at least sixteen foot four to satisfy those rules. The existing flood zone is A two elevation eleven, and it's being proposed that it will eventually change to a V E elevation fifteen. And it's advisable to establish a finished floor elevation on the replacement building that would satisfy the proposed new flood zone. The results on this require a finished floor elevation of eighteen feet. In other words, at least seven feet higher than the existing ground. We're proposing eighteen foot eleven inches. The proposed replacement building design has received approval from the C D C R one character-based zoning district requirements. And that was approved as being substantially compliant to those regulations in March of this year. The existing building is twenty-eight foot by thirty-six foot four. The proposed building would be twenty-eight foot by thirty-four foot. The oceanfront wall of the proposed building would be located six feet further inland than the existing building. We have an increase in square footage, but we do not exceed the thirty percent allowable. We have an increase in the volume, and we do not exceed the thirty percent allowable on that. Now, we have an existing building there. And if we were to utilize the existing building on the concrete block foundation, and install a second floor above the existing building through a vertical expansion, is very problematic. The shoreline zoning ordinance does allow that with limitations. The D E P requirements are more restrictive. On the coastal sand dune rules, and this is in a frontal sand dune, it says a new structure or addition to an existing structure may not be constructed on a seawall, seaward of the frontal dune. And then they list an exception under six B four. And it says that all buildings modified, which allows for a vertical expansion, but all buildings modified or reconstructed pursuant to six B must have the lowest floor constructed on a post and piling foundation. So that means that existing building, if you want to expand it vertically, the building has to have a different foundation under it. In order to install a wood piling support system, the existing building would need to be removed so that the piles could be put in place. Because the lot size, and the lack of space between the property and adjacent buildings, the existing building cannot be moved off-site. Now, the Scarborough shoreline zoning ordinance and the D E P allow for replacement and expansion of a building that meets the standards and requirements of their respective audiences. An application for the proposed replacement building has been filed with the D E P, and a decision is pending. We have not yet received that yet, because it takes several months, and we've been in there since, I think, three months ago. Irregardless of that, if we're gonna proceed with the project, a variance is required from the Scarborough zoning board of appeals to demolish the building and replace it with a proposed building, as shown on the attached plans. The proposed building is gonna, like I said, it's gonna be set back six feet further than the existing. It's gonna be two foot four inches shorter in depth, and the new placement will make it meet the side yard setbacks, the front setback, and the only big problem we have is within the eighty, seventy-five foot hat setback line. And that's the reason we're in for the variance, because we're in not compliance with fifteen B, which states you have to be further than seventy-five feet. So that's what we're in for, for the appeal. Now, the plans I supplied to both Brian, the town, and you people show proposed elevations of the pilings, finished first floor elevation, and so forth. Now, we come up in the process of applying with D E P with a conflicting problem. The existing, I don't wanna get all tied up in the weeds here, because it gets very, very complicated, believe me. The existing classification of the lot is an A E, I've got the right number, A E eleven. What that means is that the flood plain's at elevation eleven, okay?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, excuse me, what? It's actually an A O depth one foot.
Yes, I'm getting to this.
Okay.
Okay? And that has been, for thirty years, the standard for this area. The proposal from FEMA, and the maps that they came out with, which has been subject to a lot of postponement, in the maps, it has this new lot being elevated to a V E elevation fifteen. Now, another map has come out that delineates this different from what the FEMA proposal is, and it's just recently come out, which is gonna make it into a V E seventeen. And instead of being in an A E eleven, it's gonna go in an A O three. So we have conflicting flood plain levels that we're dealing with, and we've been trying to get it straightened out for the last two weeks with D E P. But they've been on vacation, booked up on meetings, and they know what we're trying to ask for, and as of yet, they have not clarified what is the actual elevation requirements that we need. So, Northeast Civil Solutions has been talking with D E P primarily through emails and so forth. And they're in hopes to get some type of answer and a clarification on this sometime next week. Now, what's that mean to you people? Almost nothing, really.
That's kinda what I was thinking of hoping.
Because you're dealing with the location of the building, okay? And the right to tear down and rebuild.
Right.
But all the limitations that go onto that with the elevations and stuff, on the plans that I've got, and according to the character ordinance that we get approval for, are affected if we don't get the right elevation, because we have to change that. And what that indirectly does, if I have to raise it up another foot, I've got a thirty-five foot height limitation from D E P. You know, we're at thirty-four foot nine inches now, so I may have to change the design of the building a little bit. So, what that gets down to is, whatever I have presented you back when I applied has slightly changed or been confused by this new problem that's arose. And I wanna make sure it gets right, so if we get approval to do this, I don't wanna come back and say we gotta modify it, because we've got different things we have to deal with. So, with that said, I'm asking the table this for another month.
That was a long roundabout way to go about that.
I was about to ask you, are you actually prepared to do this then?
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah.
Well, I have another question that's concerning the V-zone that I wrote about here.
No, we're not going to, he's asking to table it.
But that's, is that pending?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The V, the reclassification of this as a V-zone?
Oh, yes. That's been pending for a couple, three years.
Okay, I realize that. So it, the likelihood of that changing in the next month is not very high.
Well, here's where we're in a problem with.
Yeah, I know.
The FEMA maps that they put out.
Right.
Show it going to a VE fifteen. And that's been proposed not to go into effect probably till next spring.
Okay.
After being postponed for the year.
So you're not jeopardized.
But then I got other maps that are coming out saying it's VE seventeen. So winner, condriest, which one applies?
Let's, let's do the vote on the tabling and Walt and I can discuss it online because I also have many questions and I'll inform the board.
Okay, sounds great.
That sounds perfect.
I know you sent the application up for the DEP to review under the ordinance. Have you heard anything back from that? Yeah. It seems to me that no one's hearing anything back from DEP on these questions right now because I don't think they're settled on what it is and they're all confused.
That's usually what happens.
Okay, do we have a?
So motion to table appeal number two six six two.
Second.
All in favor?
I thank you.
Sorry, you had to sit for two hours.
I know.
I know, right?
Send an email.
My gosh.
You could have, you could have called me, Walt.
What kind of fun would that be?
Well, it's much better now.
Thank you.
Well then, so, five minutes later, we're on to appeal number three. Appeal number two six six three, which is a practical difficulty variance appeal by Kevin and Margaret Buckley at One Crossing Drive, which assessors map U thirty-three, Lot eighty-four. And I will ask Mr. Longstaff here to give us a quick introduction.
Can you give me just a moment?
Yep, absolutely.
That one moves so fast, I can't catch up.
You guys were tucked in and ready for another ten-hour boat, weren't you? You're like over here all night.
I'm a racehorse.
That's right. Not true, not true at all.
I think that might be the last. Yes. Okay. So, this proposal, this applicant rather, is in front of you for a practical difficulty variance. It's all due to the fact that the appellant would like to install what I believe, I'm not a pool expert, but I believe to be an average-sized pool. I don't believe it's a super-large pool. I don't believe it's a super-small pool, but it's an average-sized pool. And as he got laying out the location with his pool installer, he came and talked to me because they realized that because of the angle of the house and the fact that the lot is on a corner and therefore has two forty-foot frontages, one from Crossing Drive and one from Orchard Street, that in order to locate it where it would most easily go and where they desire to have it, it's angled so that this upper portion is going to encroach into the forty-foot setback by a little bit. That's basically because of the skirting, the concrete skirting that they put around the pools to support them. And so, we, he had applied for a pool permit, bless you.
Excuse me.
He had applied for the pool permit. We denied the pool permit. I believe you have a copy that denial in your pocket. And his request of me is, what can I do? What's the next step? What's my, what are my options? And of course, everyone has the ability or the right to file an appeal. I, you know, and I of course explained to the appellant that, you know, here's the criteria that you need to meet. And so here we are, here he is, here they are. They're going to try to demonstrate why they feel that they meet that criteria.
Hi.
Good evening. So I'm Kevin Buckley, One Crossing Drive in Scarborough. This is Peggy.
Peggy, thank you. Would you like to elaborate on anything here, Mr. Longstaff?
I think the plans kind of spell out what we're trying to accomplish here. It's a sixteen by thirty-two foot pool. The footprint that we have right now as far as where the house sits and the setbacks on both Orchard Street and Crossing Drive fall into an area where we can't move anything closer to the house at all because of, A, when they're trying to dig the pool, they had, they needed four feet around that whole setback and everything else like that. So when we found the markers, the actual survey markers that are in the land, we still have the granite stones in the corner, so we're able to identify those, do the measurements out and things to that nature to identify where exactly we are against where the property lines are from the property lines to the house. We double-checked that, you know, all the other components of the land. So the pictures that I'm showing up here are basically showing you from our property line to the forty-foot section, actually where the corner of the, the north part of the pool is going to land, it's going to land right on that forty-foot mark. So this is where the actual pool, pool is going to be sitting. So it doesn't allow us for that four-foot concrete patio on that particular set, section of it. And that's the shortest, most tidy area that we have as far as that's concerned. We can't come any closer to the house because that just puts the pool too close to the house. And for safety purposes, I wouldn't want any closer than that with people going around the pool either. So those are the concerns we have there. On the, on the other point of the pool on the Orchard Street side, there's a, we're currently at forty-three feet to that pool corner, but again, you give that a lot another four-foot concrete patio around that. It falls short of one foot on the setback, so it brings it to thirty-nine feet. So what we're doing is we're asking for a six-foot setback on that particular Orchard Street side to bring it to thirty-four feet setback versus the forty to accommodate that. All the other setbacks, as far as the other, from Crossing Drive or from the neighbors' property line to ours, accommodate all the other setbacks as far as what we're trying to do.
Okay. So we'll now go through the criteria and I'll just ask the questions and we can just read the answers in and elaborate if you'd like. So number one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood.
So the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstance in the layout of Block fifty-one with its forty-foot setbacks on both the north side Orchard Street property line and the northeast side Crossing Drive, leaving the in-ground pool dimensions with concrete patio required for pool surround short on the north corner by four feet. The other end of the pool on the northeast corner Orchard Street is one foot short of property line setback. The shallow end of the pool that abuts Lot fifty-two, fifteen-foot setback conforms to town code requirements.
Number two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abutting properties.
The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have any detrimental consequences to abutting properties. The requested variance area is a level area of yard space and will not impede on abutting property in any way.
Number three, the practical difficulty is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner. Four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
With setbacks conforming to two of the three property lines and location of pool next to the dwelling on the northeast side, the pool cannot be placed closer to the existing house for safety purposes of patio being too close to the house. Again, for safety purposes, pool stairs as outlined in the plan cannot be located closer to the house. The professional pool installation company, Poolshed, requires a four-foot concrete patio perimeter for structural integrity of the in-ground pool. The pool installation will require four feet, four-foot excavated area beyond the dimensions of the in-ground pool. Therefore, there is no feasible alternative for placement of pool location.
Did you guys explore a smaller pool?
We did.
And what was unfeasible about that?
Swimming capability. I mean, you can get a smaller pool, and I know that pools are nice for just lounging in, and I want to lounge in it too, but I also want to be able to swim. I like to do, you know, more than two strokes and be at the other end. So it's, it's kind of a going into retirement thing and thinking of like, what can we do with a pool other than just have a party?
I'd just like to ask a follow-up question. I've owned two pools, one in ground and one above, and so I'm real familiar with pools.
Okay.
Okay, so the width is sixteen feet.
Correct.
All right. In order to comply, it would have to be, if I'm not mistaken, it would have to be twelve feet wide. But it could still be thirty-two feet long, is that correct? If I'm understanding.
No, the pool, if we were to get the twelve foot, it's only twenty-four foot, twenty-four feet in length, not.
But couldn't they build it thirty-two feet long? Be like a lap pool? If you want to swim, I mean, that would certainly meet, but.
Well, swim at the end, have fun. I mean, it would be nice to fit your family in there and not just two people.
Question. Can I ask a question now or should I wait? Is, have you explored the possibility of putting the pool on the other side of the property adjacent to the driveway?
Unfortunately, this, this property, this property diagram is the original footprint of the original house. On the other side of the property, there is a breezeway and garage now. I don't have that plan when I came in.
Gotcha.
That was the, that was what I was given.
Understood.
I think there is a, I know there is. We, I think, Brad, when we actually sat down, there was another plan in the folder that outlined the breezeway and garage. So where on that fifteen-foot setback already on that side?
Yep, understood. Is there, are you in public water, public sewer?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no leach field or anything like that out there? Okay.
May I ask a general question? A going, or general question. Previously, I stated that the requirements of the pool with existing property lines leave four feet to be desired. But I recall the request for variance is six feet.
I just didn't want to be that close. I wanted to give myself a little bit of room here.
Since you don't go over here.
I know that I'm going to put it on there, but I don't want somebody coming up and saying I'm three inches short.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just trying to make sure that I've got that capability.
Five, the granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
The variance will result in containing the applicant's property into conformance with other surrounding properties.
I have a question here. When you talk about property here, you're talking about the pool itself, not your home. Okay? Because this is, we're really considering an additional building, okay? It's, this is considered a building.
Right.
And so, you know, to me, this is, the question here really is, you know, does, does this mean your house would be, your, the pool, okay? A house with a pool, okay? That feature, okay, would be more in conformance with the homes in your neighborhood in general? Now, if I'm misreading that, Brian, tell me, but that's just the way I see this. It's just what you're asking for, you know, the property that, or the building.
Yeah.
Because technically, it's a structure.
All right, correct.
You know, is, am I reading it right, Brian? Or is that, I've read too much into it? You know, in all honesty, that's, that's an interpretation that is up to the board because it, I can't answer that question. It isn't, it isn't saying it's more, it's in more conformity with the ordinance's requirements for sure.
Yeah, right.
So I think it's sort of case-specific and quite honestly, I don't really see that it's all that applicable to this particular case.
Yeah.
Where I, I'll illustrate an example of why I say that. If you lived in a neighborhood where everyone had a two-car garage but you.
Yeah.
And you needed a variance in order to have a two-car garage like everybody else in the neighborhood. That would make sense. Yeah, that's why I asked the question because I thought in your neighborhood, not even everybody, but let's say the majority of homes in your neighborhood have pools, that would be a compelling argument to me. But I don't think that's the case in Maine.
I mean, we do have pools in the neighborhood.
Yeah, but it's really the exception more than the norm.
For sure, yeah.
True.
So, and that's just, I'm just simply bringing this up because I think it's, you know, something that, it's in the back of my mind, you know, is, is a pool really something that's typical in the neighborhood? And in effect, this is make it more conforming to what the neighborhood has in general.
This is good for our discussion.
Well, it's good. I mean, there are actually three pools in our neighborhood, one across the street, one two doors down. And if you go down Orchard Street, another two doors down, there was a brand-new one that was put in.
So there are some.
There are more coming.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a trend. People want pools.
The second, the second follow-up question to be with that would be, what are the size of the other pools in the neighborhood?
Comparable. So we have one neighbor down the street that has whatever the next size pool up is from a sixteen thirty-two.
All right, so this is a rectangular pool and it's five hundred and sixty square feet. So, you know, there are all shapes of pools. You know, my in-ground pool I had was a free form. You know, I basically, you know, laid some stuff out in the ground, said, here, build it like that. And it was poor concrete, same thing. So, yeah, there are all different ways you can measure a pool, but, you know, I look at it in terms of square footage as opposed to width and length. Or if it's circular, I mean.
From what I've seen with my own eyes, and I don't know the measurements of any of them, they are all rectangular and they are all comparable either to ours or maybe the next size up.
Right. And they're all in round like this?
Brian's pulling up the aerials there for us.
That one, I believe, is a, is an eighteen by thirty-six.
Two doors down from us, they used to have an above ground and they just did an A-ground. And then the Farino family that's down on the same street as us has had theirs for probably eight years and it's a rectangular, very similar to what we want. Cross Street was the owner of Talon Inn and they have a rectangular pool too. And then two doors down-ish on Orchard Street.
There's one.
They have, that's their second pool. The first one did not make it.
Looks like we've got some above grounds and some low grounds.
The some above grounds, I'm not sure how new this picture is, but I know one.
A lot of circular above grounds there.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of small pools.
Did you explore above-ground pools?
What's that?
An above-ground pool?
Did we explore it?
Yeah. Um.
Kind of had our head set on that one, that's all.
Okay.
Six, the granting of a variance.
And I understand that I've sunk a lot of money into an A-ground, I know. I can also tell you the horror stories about what happens when you go to try to sell your house, but I'm not going to say.
That's all right.
All right. Number six, the granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
Granting of a variance will have no unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment.
Seven, the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline area as defined in thirty-eight MRSA, Section four thirty-five, or in the flood hazard zone as defined in the Town of Scarborough Floodplain Management Ordinance.
Correct. This property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline area as defined in thirty-eight MRSA four thirty-five or flood hazard zone as defined in the Town of Scarborough Floodplain Management Ordinance.
I'm sure there are other criteria in this section that we need to look at in terms of, I have to look it up.
We go to mine.
Okay. We'll start that one, just one.
Yes, under the practical difficulty variance, we just went through the seven qualifications.
We did, yeah, that was A. But there's also B.
Correct.
We have the seven questions, but then we have B.
Correct.
So we really need to discuss that one too.
Do we have any other questions before we open it to the public?
I have a question if you, sorry.
No.
The, my thought is, so there are no other, and I understand, like, standard size is fourteen by thirty-two and then there's like a ten by twenty standard size. To go with a custom-length pool that they can pour, was that not an option or?
We're just looking for the standard way to get the most out of our, as far as the width, you know, we didn't want a swimming channel to go back.
No, sure.
Especially if we have kids who are growing up, grandchildren now are going to start using a pool now. And what I don't want is to have a pool so narrow that somebody decides they want to jump off the side there and hit their head on the other side because they're, they're playing around.
Sure.
So it's also a safety concern as far as us, along with the convenience. We would like that. You know, we didn't want, obviously didn't have room for the larger pool. If we did, we would have thought about that. But I think the twenty, the twelve by twenty-four is just a, it's just going to dwarf what we're trying to accomplish there. And the reasonableness of asking for an additional six feet on there, you know, I think is, is something. And the reasonableness of asking for an additional six feet on there, you know, I think is, is something that we've been, we feel comfortable with it without saying, well, I need twenty feet, I need ten feet, I'm just looking for six to cover that, that skirt.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think what we were just asking, though, too, is, did you explore putting in a custom pool that would have the dimensions that would just allow for that, that section of the lot where it would encroach?
We didn't look for customization at all. We were looking for the standardized pools, and we felt that that one kind of did what we were looking for, so we did not explore that.
And Eric at the pool shed also spoke to us in, in some depth about the fact that you could get into higher costs, and we're not looking for, I don't know, I'm just learning these pool things, you're the pool man, but...
Not really.
...all these fancy things. I'm watching all those pool shows on TV, and I'm like, oh, it'd be nice to have that, but we're not going there. We're just going with a standard. We've always wanted a pool, we couldn't give it to our kids when they were growing up, we want to give it to the grandchildren. It's just like a last hurrah thing we want to accomplish in our lifetime. It's on my bucket list, it's on my bucket list. It's a swimmable pool, not just a...
So, a couple more questions about the pool configuration. Will you have a diving board I went in?
No diving board, don't want a diving board, just slide.
And where will stairs be located, on the side or on...
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't put the stairs in, but if you look at the back of the, the, so on the backside of the property, so if you're facing Crossing Drive and looking forward, the house sits there. That little section onto the, onto the side is where the eight-foot section is gonna be.
Okay, so it's on a corner?
It won't be in the corner.
Oh, oh, on the side, okay.
So, dripping down, so it'll, it'll be an eight-foot.
Will it be just one uniform depth, or will it taper down?
The pool itself?
Yeah, the depth of the wall.
There will be a deep end to it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna open it up to the public. I don't think there's anyone who would, yes, we would like to talk.
Don't object now.
If there's anyone who would like to speak?
Is there a dismal man in the back?
Did we receive any letters or emails?
Madam Chair, we did not receive any letters, any written communication, any emails or phone calls on this.
Thank you. So now, we're gonna go through the qualifications and discuss them. Just want to remind the board the definitions that come in here. Under a practical difficulty variance, practical difficulty is defined as a case where the strict application of the dimensional standards... Did I close it again?
I thought you did.
Did I?
Close it again.
I don't know if I did, sorry.
I heard it close that time.
Now, now it's closed.
Sorry. Practical difficulty is defined as a case where the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone which it is located, and also would result in a significant economic injury to the applicant. So it says it would also result, so we have to review this application with the idea that they are going to be incurring a significant economic injury by not being able to put their pool in. So let's go through the criteria. Number one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. The applicant has done a very good job at providing drawings and information showing that they are on, they are on a corner, so they have setbacks on two different sides that they're trying to deal with. And, Ms. Torrance?
Yeah, I believe that, that number one is met.
I agree, number one certainly met with what has been shared and provided to us.
They've demonstrated on this drawing of the part plan, the dimensions that the pool physically can't, in its current form, can't go anywhere else on the property. That includes the opposite end of the property where they have currently a breezeway garage already in place. So this is the only spot that could potentially house this size of pool.
To me, the, the key issue is really the fact that you have two forty-foot setbacks, not one. Because if they didn't have, if they only had one forty-foot setback in the front yard, this would not be an issue, probably. You know, as long as the building where the main house is located where it is. So that is a unique situation. Now, there are other corner lots that, that have to comply with this, but most homes in the neighborhood don't have to, so that makes it unique, so, yeah, it is definitely unique.
Yes, because other, other neighbors have pools and they do not have to go through this process.
Right.
So all in favor of one being met? The granting of the variance, number two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair amount of value of the abutting properties. We just discussed, this would not be an undesirable change, this is similar to some of the properties of surrounding them as well.
The only, the only thought I just had is, you know, we haven't talked about, I mean, I presume that we have fence around this pool?
Yeah.
So, yeah, but then I'm, I'm comfortable with that one being met.
I agree, I feel that this one has been met, no further comment. I also agree, I don't, I don't have anything to add to this. Other houses have pools.
Yeah, fence was my question because it wasn't shown on here.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, it would have been nice to have seen exactly where the fence was wanting to be. I'm not sure what the requirements are for fence setbacks, you know, to property lines, or especially if you have a forty-foot setback, you know, where the fence has to be. I don't know, but, you know, that's, I'm sure they would have to comply to whatever the code is.
We actually have a plan for two fences because we're a little bit paranoid as grandpas. We've got a hall to get out like an outdoor privacy right there, and then another one should sunshine the, the, that's not happening on that fence.
That town application actually has on here, fencing or safety barrier must be installed prior to pool use. I have a pool, I'm very well aware that you need to have a fence. My gate is triple locked.
If you have to access an eight-ris, that was my experience in South Portland. So I'm not sure what Scarborough requires.
Number?
You have to, people have to be able to get in and out, unfortunately. But there are ways of designing latches where you can control that reasonably. So, yeah, there are solutions to that.
Okay, all in favor of two being met? Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. This one can be interpreted anyway, the location of their house is not by their action, but they are before us tonight because of their action to want a pool. Ms. Torrance?
My only struggle with this one is that we brought up the possibility of, could you put the, the pool on the other side of the house? And apparently, there's now been a garage that's been built there. So that, that's the only part of that question that I do struggle with is, you know, if they, if the, if the garage was built after the fact, that's, that's a, an action that was taken that has limited their ability to put in a pool, and I, that's, we're gonna have to decide how we, how we view that.
That's a really good point.
I'm not sure there's adequate room, you know, again, I don't mean to...
No, I, no, I, no, I understand what you're saying, too.
I don't know.
Okay, so we're talking about it's not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner, Mr. Karen?
I'm sorry, I have nothing further to add.
I don't either on this one.
I don't either.
Okay, all in favor of three being met?
Okay, can we have that vote again? I don't think everybody raised their hand.
No.
Nobody did, it's four.
Four, four, one against?
Four, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Number four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance. We have discussed at length with the applicant, the other alternatives that are available. Interpretation, the board's interpretation of feasible, I think any pool is nice. A feasible alternative under my eyes is an above-ground pool, it's a smaller pool. This is a pretty big pool, they do have, I feel they have all feasible alternatives. Ms. Torrance?
I think I agree with the chair on that, is that I, I do, I struggle with this one as well because I think there are feasible alternat, alternatives available in terms of either custom-designed pools, above-ground pools, smaller pools. The size of the pool is not necessary for, you know, to, to, to not to preclude, you know, the size of the pool does not preclude use or accomplish a significant economic inj, injury. So I have a hard time justifying that, that one, and I say that with a lot of pain because I can certainly appreciate my, my bucket list of having a pool is the same, and I, it, it pains me. But I, I do have a real problem with this one. I don't, I, I don't know that we can in all reasonableness say that there's no other feasible alternative.
Mr. Karen?
I regrettably agree that, as discussed this evening, there may be other options available, although they may be less desirable.
I also concur, and the practical difficulty application is one of the most difficult ones to pass through. The, the argument for no other feasible alternative is probably one of the hardest ones to try to justify in front of a board like ours. There is a feasible alternative, unfortunately, it's not the dimension of the size of the pool that you want, but there is a possibility to put a pool there. And that is, it is an unfortunate circumstance, just due to the nature of the corner lot that you're on because you have forty-foot setbacks on each side because there are two, this Crossing Drive and Orchard Street there. And the forty-foot setbacks there were put in for a purpose. You know, it, just thinking about it, worst-case scenarios of something coming off of the road that's out of control or something like that, but the forty-foot setback rule, the forty-foot setback is there for a reason. And one of the, one of the purposes of the zoning board of appeals is to, is to limit and eliminate non-conformities as much as possible where we can feasibly. So unfortunately, with this one, I can't agree with this particular point, though, and I, and I empathize, but this one I can't, I can't agree with.
All right, so what this comes down to for me is just reasonable alternatives. And, and that really comes to want versus need, and what's practical versus, you know, which, you know, would be very desirable. Again, we, we really need to look at this, you know, strictly according to the rules and not grant variances unless there's a significant difficulty here. I, I just don't see where it's a hardship for us to limit the dimensions of this to, you know, the forty-foot setback requirements. You know, if you want to have a rectangular pool, you know, that would allow you to put in one that's still thirty-two feet long, but the width would be reduced to twelve feet. That's, that's a good-sized pool still. And is it as wide as what you would like to have? No, okay, but, you know, twelve feet is still a reasonable width. And so to me, that's a reasonable alternative, not what you want here, but it's something that's very doable within, you know, the current standards.
All in favor of four being met? And not, yeah, that's five. Number five, the granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. I think my kind of interpretation of this is there are other properties around who have pools that did not need this variance, and so it would not bring it into conformance with the surrounding properties by granting this.
Yeah, I, I don't think you can make a reasonable argument that, that this brings it into more of a conforming, conforming with the neighborhood. I mean, there's several houses in the neighborhood without pools. There are houses with above-ground pools of different shapes, different sizes. I, I can't, I can't justify this one.
My impression or opinion on this one is leaning towards trend, as was shared. Other properties within the vicinity that may not need to apply for sets of variance or go through this process are able to get pools, there's been an increase. While at this time, it may not bring it into conformity with the current number of pools. It's not to say that sometime in the future, it could possibly do so.
I don't see an issue necessarily with this one. Other folks are having pools in the area. It, I would say it is more of a trend than not, that people want to have these in their yard. But again, the hiccup for me is just the feasible alternative for number four, but I don't see any issues with number five.
I think, in a way, we're splitting hairs on this one, and, yeah, pools are minority in, in this neighborhood, but it's the trend, so, I mean, how, to me, this is not an issue at all. So it doesn't matter, I could go either way on this one, if I have to.
Okay, all in favor of five being met? That's three, and then not, against. Number six, the granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment. The applicant has said that there will be no unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment. And I'm sure the design they have and everything would make the environment good and nice and designed pretty.
I think, you know, my, my thinking on whether they've answered this adequately or not is, is kind of irrelevant because of the fact that I, the feasible alternative issue is such a big one. But you really didn't respond to this question, you just reiterated it. And, you know, you, I, I do have to wonder, when you, when you dig a big giant hole in the back of your yard, you know, it changes, it changes the way water seeps into the ground, it changes a lot of runoff around your house. And so I, it, you know, I would have liked to have seen more information about what was explored and what was talked about on that, on that question. Without more information, I can't say either way whether there's an any adverse effect or not because there's really no information there.
Don't have much to add to that, thinking of a pool, comfortable in the summertime. That's about it.
I don't, I don't see an issue with this one. I mean, pools have been installed and put in place for years without really any adverse effect on the environment. I don't have an issue with this.
I certainly agree with that. If pools are properly installed, this one most certainly would be. You know, this is a significant investment, it's gonna be done the right way, and it will not harm the environment in any way.
All in favor of six being met? Number seven, the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreline area as defined in thirty-eight MRSAs, four thirty-five, or hazard, flood hazard zone as defined in the town of Scarborough Floodplain Management Ordinance.
I can verify that.
The town is, the long staff has verified that they are not in the shoreline zone or in the flood hazard zone.
I'm comfortable the standard being met?
No further comment?
No further comment?
No comment.
Okay, all in favor of seven? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve appeal number twenty-six sixty-three as presented.
Second.
We need a second.
Need a second?
I'll second.
You know, it happened, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor? And those against? That's five, sorry.
No.
Not this size.
Not this pool, not this pool. I think the, the honest answer is you need to explore some other options.
Yeah.
If you'd already had done that and came in with how it was gonna pose significant economic injury to go with a customized pool that would meet the dimensions, the board could have seen that. So you, you clearly stated that you haven't looked in those directions, you were going with a stock size. I think you need to look at some other options and see what you can do.
And then come back in.
No, if you can look... No, if you can look at options that do not require a variance, excuse me, then you just can apply for your pool permit again and not come back here. That's, that's what we need to look at. What we're saying is, it has to be within the setbacks.
Okay, so you look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever is in with the setbacks, then you go see Brian, and, you know, whatever staff has to review it.
Okay. Do you have any other comments generally? There's nothing on the agenda, so...
I'll move to adjourn, unless Mr. Longstaff has any comments he'd like to add.
Other than we, you have an applicant for the final alternate spot, an applicant which I expect will be appointed by council prior to our next meeting, I think.
Awesome.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
That's great.
That would be good.
Good to know.
So, should we keep the Walter Wilson presentation? Yeah, would, would you all make sure you turn in your binders, the whole thing, Will, she'll go through it, she'll make sure that... Walter Wilson? Correct. Put everything back in your binders and leave them with us, don't take them home. Right, okay, okay. And we'll make sure that...
Don't take them home, we'll end up...
I'll move to adjourn. A second?
All in favor?
You beat me to it.